I just got the thumbs up. So. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the August 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan and I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, discuss your proposed project or request for variance. The floor will then be open for anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony can be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision. The public is welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through the deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have four currently here. We may get a fifth before we get down to business. And four constitutes a quorum. I won't call the role. Ms. Resonetti. Ms. Buchi. Mr. Landers. Mr. Donovan is present and Mr. Matzo. We'll make note if he does show. He said he was going to be here, so. Did you all get a chance to take a look at last last month's meeting minutes? Any changes, additions, deletions? Anything?
No, they look good to me.
Okay, then could I get a motion to approve? I hear a motion. Do I have a second? Sue, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. And. That gets us to our one case that is listed on the agenda for tonight. The applicant is Arnold. Tika Singh, 39 Lake Ave. There's a use variance and an area variance. Use variance for congregate living approval with three sleeping rooms where is not permitted. And parking variance to allow zero parking spaces where three spaces are required for a congregate living facility. Welcome back. Yep, come on up, make sure your microphone's got a green when you get up there, push the button, make sure it's green.
Yeah.
And then tilt it up close to you.
Hello, hello.
If you would, just state your name and address for the record.
Arnold Tika Singh, reside at 3739 Lake Avenue, Pecumtown, New York, 13905.
Okay, and who did you bring with you?
My name is Steven Engler, I'm Mr. Mr. Tika Singh's property manager.
Hi.
Right, and my address is 286 Main Street, Johnson City, New York.
Okay, thanks for joining us. We had heard this last month briefly, but we didn't have the numbers to really give it a full consideration, so. We tabled it for this month, so could you give us any kind of update to your application or update your situation?
We believe that we may be entitled to a variance because it's not congregate living. We have three tenants that live there, they're on a lease. And they've had two separate leases already, they've lived there for a couple of years. They're quiet, they don't bother anybody, they have no need for parking because they don't have cars. And we think that this for this kind of situation is what the various, what the variance is intended for.
Is is your mic, is yours lit up green?
Not working?
No, did you push the button and make sure it's green?
Yes, green, it's green.
Okay, there you go. Okay, do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Sure, go right ahead.
So I just wanted to be clear that the house has a living room, kitchen, dining room on the first floor.
Yes, ma'am.
And then three bedrooms on the second floor.
Yes, ma'am.
On both sides of the house?
Yes, ma'am.
No, you live on the one side.
No, sorry, sorry, sorry. I live. In one side on 37. And the other side is 39. So they are living on 39.
Right, so 37 and 39 are both laid out the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They look, they look like townhouses.
Right.
They're connected, yeah.
Okay.
I believe it's considered congregate housing because anything over two. Unrelated, so three or more.
So now I have a question for you, Gary. You just said any amount of unrelated.
Right, so anyone in the city of being infected to direct to related individuals to the family definition. And obviously it's in the first, we do that two people, we kind of assume that they're a couple or whatever. Once you get to three or more, then that becomes illegal reference anyway, unless you have a prior pool or unless you're in that one.
But so then you're defining a family. If there's two people who aren't married and not related.
Right, but they're, they basically live with the family in order to qualify for a family, they have to be, they have to. Share that like most many guys would be the option of whether somebody can be considered a family, they have to go west.
Right.
And they have to get a single lease. Last time I knew, a lot of people he was renting to were like, I mean, a class of charity, so DSS, which would automatically know if they cannot possibly be having their lease, and he could not possibly be filing a single check, you know, because they'd be getting paid by one entity or another.
So are they on a single lease, these three people?
Yes, single lease, and we believe that state law, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, which governs all the apartments in the city of Bantin and every other place in the state permits people to live as roommates who are not related. So we have a little conflict here, which I guess. You're good, you guys have to work out.
Yeah, and if you remember when the applicant first came forward, we were, we were going to consider whether the grouping qualified as a family.
Right.
And then we decided we wanted to look at it a different way. As a, as a concrete living rather than a, a family.
Can you guys explain the difference between the R2 and R3 districts with respect to like location and composition? Because, you know, I'm looking at this neighborhood, Google Maps. There's a business next door, there are other multifamily units in the area, so. I guess. What gives rise to that distinction?
Definitely why I got classified in R2, the difference in R2 would be one through, it's a lot different within R2 with the multi units. And so we allow more stuff in R3, so it's decided to add multi units. Some of those loans are probably either predate or they may even come in and get parents in the past.
So if they were constructed that way, as I assume the one today was. Shouldn't it also? But isn't that multifamily? There's two families in the building.
Even though, you could have two bannings in there, that's not.
But the character of the neighborhood, there are other multifamily units, is that correct? Okay.
If not exactly the same within a stone's throw, yeah. Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Anything, Ernie? And I apologize, it's taken us a while to come to a resolution on this, but I think we can probably get through it tonight. I'm hoping. All right, well, hang tight, we're gonna do some of the things that we have to do to make this all. Step by step. Now, I did mention this was. Tabled as of last month, did I need to open up the public hearing for this now?
I believe you left it open last time, but I just want to make a note that last time when we did the legal noticing, we didn't include the parking variance, but we did redo the noticing, it was all done. You know, everybody had enough time to make a comment if they wanted to, within reasonable time with the parking variance included. And, you know, we have not gotten any feedback from, from the public.
Okay. All right.
Or either, let me just say, Sean, and either of the variances, there's been no, no public feedback?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, then I will make note of that, that we have left this open, so we will continue at the point of opening the public hearing. Or for comment. Anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against the, this project, please come forward, state your name and address. I see no one, do we, did we get any letters, calls, anything at all?
Nothing, no.
Okay, then I would like to close the public hearing part of this, the comment section of this. For 39 Lake Ave. Second, all in favor, okay. Okay, and let's see, one of these has, one or both of these. Not this one. One of them has seeker. Parts to it. Oh, I would also mention, we did get. 239 feedback from the county and essentially their comments where they had no comment. To make it brief, we make no determination as to whether the applicant meets the four tests of use variance, so. Their, their comments, they made them, they really didn't. Way in one, one direction or another. Okay, so you want to start with the area variance or the use variance? Probably the use variance, because if that one doesn't pass, then the other one's kind of moot. What do you think? Okay. All right, so. The use variance. Is to approve congregate living with a total of three sleeping rooms where that's not permitted in the R2 residential one and two unit dwelling district. We've looked at the layouts. How the landlord is the neighbor, he's in the neighboring unit of the. 3739. And we have to look at, is there a reasonable return without? This use variance being granted, is it unique? Does it alter the character of the neighborhood and was it self-created?
If I can make a comment before you proceed. We just want to make, we just want you as members to make sure that if you were to grant the use variance, that the applicant meets all four of the requirements. If even one of them is not going to meet, then, you know, the use warrants would not be, should not be allowed. Meaning if, for example, if the self-creator hardship question, if that is self-creator hardship, then obviously you would not meet that requirement, therefore the use warrants would not be approved.
Okay, gotcha. Do you want to start with that one? You might as well, how do you feel about the? This situation being a self-created situ- situation? I think from my point of view. The landlord was not aware of this requirement at the time that he was renting, because this property seems to have been rented continuously for quite a while. So. How do you guys feel about that?
I would agree.
Okay.
I agree, and I think. This is a situation where any duplex and a lot of duplexes are three bedroom.
Yeah.
So that makes it very difficult that legally it's only two. They take a third person to make it financially viable. And then they're out of code.
Right.
I have a question.
You go ahead.
So how long have you owned this property?
About five years, someone.
Okay.
Over five years.
Is, is your primary residence?
Yes.
And then how many times have you turned that? Apartment next door?
I didn't get to, ma'am, can you please repeat it?
How many times has, have the tenants of that property changed over? In the five years?
No time, ma'am.
These people have been here for five years?
Yes, ma'am, they were there quite a long time.
Okay, were they there before you and you inherited?
No, ma'am.
No, okay, all right.
So I, I mean, usually, or I. Not having a knowledge of the rules is not an excuse, usually. But I think in this case, looking at the neighborhood involved, the, the situation that. I, I think it was an honest, if, if there was a mistake made, I think it was an honest mistake in kind of assuming that. I've got this many bedrooms, I can go in this direction. It's, I'm this side, tenants are this side. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not too concerned with the self-created. Is it gonna, is granting this variance gonna cause a? Negative change to the character of the neighborhood? I would say no. I would say most people would not notice. Based on there being, you know, a bunch of.
I would agree with that.
What was that?
I agree.
Okay, any other comments on that part? All right, we're moving right back up. Properties historically been used as a two-family year-round residence, therefore the zoning board must determine is a proposed use is unique. Well, I mean. It is kind of unique, it's not something that we typically see or approve.
And it could be unique because the city hasn't presented us with any comparables with the neighboring homes.
Yeah. Any issues with that requirement? Okay, and back to the reasonable return. We have to determine if the applicant has provided evidence of reasonable return, that was in the application, I believe. And did, did the numbers presented there satisfy your?
I have a question.
Sure.
Are there any outstanding zoning violations on this property?
Just the fact that he. I'm not sure if we're gonna go violation, I'll make it down from the phone system. I don't know where that case is.
So they've been cited for zoning violations?
Yeah, that's why they're there.
Right, okay, but not, no other?
I don't know, I don't know the status, I know they were cited for code, because initially, the first time we talked to the gentleman, one of the tenants had actually called in, I mean, went all there, they had code violations. And the landowner was shut down a few years ago, and then started back up again, and then code got another call from the tenant. And they went back over there, and then they brought him back. Because they discovered that it was operating, they were in the room again. Or slipping in there. Which then I cited in the tenant's, or, and now if we see their parents, they make a leave. And I don't know, like, if I only look at the status of the code.
What was the nature of the code violations?
I think the first time around, I think one of the tenants, I think she was in therapy or whatever, she was upset because there wasn't a kitchen. And he had stated that his wife took the food for the tenants and bring it upstairs to the apartment.
But there is a kitchen, correct?
Last time I was there, he was going to install a kitchen, I have nothing to add to his wife's.
So wait a minute, I asked the question, is it three bedrooms upstairs and a full kitchen, dining room, living room on the first floor?
Yes, ma'am. After the first.
So.
After the first incident, right? Sorry to say, right. My way of speaking, after the first incident. I know that it's gonna work because of the violation that I had. Then afterwards, I get three individuals come to rent the whole. The 39 Lake Avenue, top and bottom. There were three bedroom upstairs, downstairs, carry a kitchen, living room space. So there's one 39, the whole 39, the three individuals are renting.
And it's one lease?
One lease, you guys have a copy of it, we submitted it.
And so were there any other code violations? Just.
Like I said, I don't know what, for Megan, for John, for both, what can they be exactly?
I don't have any code violation in that property, so. There's no code violation.
Current or past?
Either one.
Corrected. I mean, correct or past, ma'am?
You had some in the past, but they've been corrected, or there was never any code violations to begin with?
Not with these tenants, prior to that, I had a violation after the first tenant calling about the kitchen, so I moved them out. With Catholic charities, these tenants have their, not with, they're privately, you know, private people that rent in now. I don't have no violation in it.
Now, are these people, are these people live as a family, or are they three separate people that come and go on their own?
Well, to my observation, they act as family. Although they're individual. You know, they, they don't have no different tongue within themselves, they just, you know, they're happy people living in the place because of the appearance of the house. The backyard and what have you, they enjoy living there.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the drawing of the first floor. There's a room 13 by 13, then a middle room.
Yeah.
13 by 14. What's the ki- where, where's the kitchen?
At the back, at the back.
Toward the back of the house? So it'd be the smaller 13 by 13?
Yeah, the first room, the second room, the kitchen.
So the middle, that 13 by 14, which is right by the stairs.
Yeah.
That is.
There's a living room, a sitting area, they sit on what TV. Then if you go down more to the other side, there's a kitchen there.
Okay. The kitchen was added?
No, sir, it was there all the time.
Does that sound right?
Well, the lesson I was getting there was a while ago. The people who were living on the second floor of the wrong side of the, of the pool as well. They did not have a kitchen, like, they were just cooking in the pool up there. He was claiming that his sister-in-law or somebody was like being the second unit, the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh, so they are two separate units?
Yeah, so that, that was happening, it was the first time in there, and then the second time, he claimed that we never gained access to the first floor. But he claimed that they weren't, that those individuals that were living there were no longer living.
Yeah.
So the current tenants can, they, they have access to upstairs and downstairs?
Yes, sir. Downstairs and upstairs. They have.
Yeah.
The reason, I'm going to tell you, the reason I'm asking about this is because there's a difference between renting rooms and renting an apartment.
Right, I know there's a difference of individual rooms renting or the apartment, this is the whole house they rent. The whole 39 Lake Avenue.
Do you rent the garage?
No, sir.
No one rents the garage?
No. The driveway is big, like six cars could park in the driveway.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of the lease?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
We submitted that week, months ago. The code.
I just don't see it in the file.
It doesn't mean it got into our, our records. Sean, do you know if the rental agreement was part of the application?
I do not see it in our case file, I don't know if it's submitted to us or the, or code, I'm not 100% sure. I'm, I'm looking through the case file right now, and I do not see a document in there.
If you find something that is pertinent, holler at us.
Yeah, it was requested by the code officers long ago, we gave it to them right away, and we submitted it also with our application, yeah. No, the code officers who were there a couple of years ago, we gave it to them, and then later when we applied for these proceedings here, we submitted it to the planning department. The planning department took everything from us. Yeah.
So the, the terms of the lease, each one of the tenants pays like an equal share, who do they pay it to, directly to Mr. Tika Singh?
Correct.
And it's equally divided?
Correct.
Set cover, utilities? Extras?
Correct.
Okay. So one, one, one charge and that's their housing cost for the month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that answer all your, your questions?
On the lease.
To get us back to deliberating?
Yeah, on the lease.
Back to where we started, yeah, pretty much. Thank, thank you for your feedback. So we're back on the reasonable return. And part of that had to do with. If you're only renting two people versus three. So. How do you guys feel about the satisfaction of that one part?
It's more than just the difference between two or three people.
I can't hear you.
It's more than just the difference between two or three people, you'd have to find a new tenant potentially, what does the market look like? There could be loss involved there. So those are things for us to keep in mind too, as opposed to just the distinction between two and three people.
So do we need more information? Well, legal, illegal. I mean, it is as simple as two and three, because what's permitted by zone, by our zoning rules is two. What he's operating was, is three, so the difference between the two and his cost to operate, that is the difference we're really talking about here.
But that doesn't factor in the other costs associated, the losses, I should say, associated with finding new tenants. And even, even if we were going to take that into consideration, the amount of outstanding debts against the property per month is a $1,000 mortgage. And monthly, there is $1,200 generated from the property. Is that enough to live on? I mean.
I don't, that depends on what you're doing with it. But with.
So that's.
That's, that's the current situation with three. Renters. There would be a shortfall if there were two.
Presumably with two under the same lease, you'd still be paying a fixed amount of rent.
Correct, but your income for the property would be going down.
Not necessarily, if you're paying for the whole unit as opposed to individual rooms. Which is what they're claiming is the case here.
It sounds like about three, like, what, 350 per person is the charge? Roughly.
But if you're paying for the whole apartment under one lease, you're gonna have one. Fixed number, so it doesn't really matter how many people are in the unit. It's, am I going to get this total amount required under the lease, or am I not? Doesn't matter how many people are in there for that purpose.
If you're gonna rent that space to one person and charge them $1,000, no one's gonna rent it.
Not necessarily true. People rent smaller spaces for more money.
In that, in that neighborhood, I don't really think someone would pay $1,000 by themselves for that space. I really would find that hard to believe.
In that neighborhood, but that still doesn't change the fact that you have a fixed number under the lease, whether it be one person or two.
Well, what is the lease, does the lease say a number?
We don't know, but generally speaking.
Yeah.
That would be the reality unless you are in fact. Selling the rooms one by one, he says that they're not, he says there's one lease. So.
Think, we're gonna see if you guys, regardless of that, in the lease, if they're disqualified, if they are indeed, and I don't know this 100% back time with the case, if they are getting, if their rents are being subsidized or paid fully by a government agency or an outside source, that would automatically make it that they did not get. that would automatically make it that they would not be able to rent the family, which is the way the law was set up. And we allow one of two people, it was much easier, and then three, we automatically, when you are one of them, we automatically deem that as legal, then they have to reach for it, come to you guys, if their case to be recognized as a family, and then we would allow that to happen, and then four, have no chance, have no return. But I think that's, that's the world policy, is, is, are they, are they three people who are working, that have some other form of income that's full in a month to pay it? Or at least three individuals that are being, their rent being paid by B S A, or after charity, or any other subsidized thing? If it matters automatically, then they'll get where they thought.
But we're not considering whether they're a family or not, we're considering whether they will qualify as congregate living. We've, that ship has sailed, the family situation, we're not even considering that. So I I'm not even concerned about that. What I am concerned about is meeting the criteria if we, if we do or not, and then making a decision based on that. So where the money's come from, I don't care. Where the money is coming from, I don't care, nor does the applicant, he's got a set amount of expenses per month, he's got a set amount of income. That's what we're considering here, we're not, with the nuance of the family or who's paying for it, I don't care. It's, it is, is this financially doable or undoable by this, by the criteria he's presented to us, that's what we need to consider. So where do we stand? Let there be light.
The application says that they can't afford to live if there's nobody in the other side, and there's no guarantee that somebody else would be moving into the other side.
Well, then.
So absent a guarantee, to me, that indicates financial hardship.
Okay. I believe it does too. No, I think we've been saying the same.
Yeah, and I agree too, which, well, I also agree, as a landlord or from his point of view, you can't pick three people to live together that want to pay the rent together either, so I mean, you may go from three to two, to, you know, that may go back and forth over the years.
Right. I mean, I I know this is a tricky and slippery slope when you're talking about allowing three unrelated people living together in an R one, R two. It's a slippery slope when we get to that, and, you know, what does it mean? And we've asked counsel last time if that, you know, can be made to just, you know, go with the term of the agreement or until the, but it goes with the property, it's, it stays with the property, so whatever decision we make sticks to the property.
Right, and we've, we've been through this, like over on Oak and Murray type, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But again, we're very close to our three in proximity, we can, you know, you can throw a stone into our three.
Exactly.
That's the thing, there has to be some sort of common sense, because I feel like some of this is just blanket application of designation, R two, R three, when there's really no material difference between this particular neighborhood and say two blocks over or wherever it is, R three, so from a practical perspective, I think,
Yeah.
that really matters in ways heavily here, especially where you have, unlike other circumstances, you have the owners of the property living in this house. With that, there's kind of a presumption, they're taking better care of the premises, it's not just being laid to waste by random tenants, you don't have the butchering of historic buildings like we've looked at in the A B B on it tract, which we have considered before, so this case requires, I think, a different analysis, while still keeping in mind the criteria because of the specific facts.
Alright, so we've kind of beaten this one pretty good. Um, are we ready to make a motion on this, on the use variance? I I I think I've heard um, more or less, we have satisfied the four criteria. So, uh, Marina, would you like to make a motion?
Motion to grant a use variance for a congregate living facility with a total of three sleeping rooms where it is not permitted, and R two residential, one and two unit dwelling district.
Okay, could I get a second?
Second.
I hear a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous for Shalon, we passed the first hurdle, now we need to go into the parking. Okay, regarding the parking, it's uh seeking variance to allow zero parking spaces where three are required. Um, da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da-da. Okay. What is, so let's, let's, let's perhaps ask the applicant some questions. Does the driveway and garage go with thirty-nine and thirty-seven?
Yes, sir.
You park there?
Yes, sir, I park in the driveway.
Okay, um, does any, do you park in the garage at all, or is that just storage?
Sir, sometimes I park in the garage, sometimes.
Okay. Let's assume, for argument's sake, one of your tenants had a car, where would you, where would you consider allowing them to park? Would you consider allowing them to park in the driveway?
Yes, sir, the dri- sir, the driveway is big, like six car could park.
Six car parking there, that's a huge driveway.
Okay.
And it concrete and it's.
But currently, nobody has a car.
Yes.
Okay, do you guys have any other questions?
They don't have care, sir.
Pardon me?
They don't have care.
Okay. But whatever decision we make stays with the property.
They could use the driveway, sir.
Yep.
There's no problem with that.
So why do they need a parking variant?
Because there's no parking, dedicated parking, unless you, unless you kind of identify three spots in the driveway that would be for the use of the tenants.
Yes, sir.
It would be an academic exercise at this point, I understand.
Right.
There's room for it.
I, I don't understand why that's before us today, if you look at the picture, you can easily fit six cars.
Yeah, so I mean, you could theoretically say, the left side of the parking lot, I'm, I'm, I'm dedicating to the tenants, knowing that they have none right now, but going forward, and then we wouldn't even need a variance.
Yes, there'd be no problem with that.
Are we able to do that with, with him specifying in his application or somehow that they're, that the left side of the driveway, uh, for all intents and purposes, is the three spots? Or can we just have that as our decision, just saying, stating that they've met, um, code in this case? I mean, we can, we can go through the, through the process and end up at that, okay?
Yeah, like it'd be awful.
Okay, then we'll do that, that okay with you guys?
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, so, we have, you know, get to the um criteria, or do you want to discuss that first? It's not necessary, if there's three spots assigned.
And we could designate it, but they can also work it out where
they have two cars and. We can just say, as our decision, we grant this and noting that.
There are six spots right within the unit.
And it would mean pretty much nothing, but it would, it would be in black and white, it would go with the property.
And I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we go through this quickly, there are no, there is, there is a seeker I have to go through.
I may add that the driveway was built specifically as an oversized driveway to accommodate both addresses.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
Yep.
Um, okay. I would like to, uh.
It looks more like a parking lot than a driveway.
It, it does from the pictures I've seen, um, and I don't think we have the need to put any kind of lines there, um, as long as we have the understanding, so I have to go through, I make a motion that Z B A is the lead agency for a seeker. Can I get a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, and I'll quickly go through these. And I will note that where there's blanks left, that's where we have to consider if it's small or moderate impact. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the, with an opted land use plan or zoning regulations? Actually, no, because it will meet the zoning. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character, quality, quality of the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics of the caused establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment use utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? I would say no. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to the environmental resources or human, or human health? I would say no, and I would make a motion that we have a negative declaration for seeker, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now we can get to quickly to the criteria. Um, is it an undesirable change, we're not really granting a uh a variance here, so it will not create an undesirable change. Is there a reasonable alternative? No, the parking, the driveway will be, will be a reasonable source for parking. Is it a substantial request? No. Is it an adverse impact to the physical and environmental conditions? No, is it self-created? No, it's not. Um, so I would like to propose a statement here or motion, I would move that we approve the parking variance, noting that sufficient parking is provided with the existing driveway, there are three spots available for tenants, and I would uh move that for approval, can I get a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, now that's documented, so you are now, as soon as this is signed off, you are good to go.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Parking, the, the actual uh paperwork requirement for the parking is satisfied, and the congregate living situation has been resolved in this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other business before us?
Uh, no, we do not.
The voice from above, I like when he does that. Okay, then, um, I would move to adjourn, can I get a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you.